Pleadges to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, tonight I promise I won't mute anybody. Next item is comments, suggestions, petitions by residents in attendance regarding items that are not on the agenda.
Good evening, Tom Walsh, Chair of the Westchester Historical Commission. And I would just like to take a moment to give you a heads up for an event coming up. And the date for that event, if you would write it down, is Saturday, July 26, 2025. That's right, 2025. It is the national and it's an international event. It involves the 200th anniversary of Lafayette's farewell tour of the United States. The events are sponsored by the American Friends of Lafayette, the bicentennial Friends of Lafayette farewell tour, the DAR, the SAR, and America 250. Bruce Malady is the Delaware County and Chester County Commissioners Coordinator, and we are working with Bruce. We've been working with him several months, and we had a meeting at the History Center yesterday. Events are scheduled to begin in Paris, France on July 11 of this year. The scene will then shift to Staten Island in the United States on August 15. And there'll be a series of events throughout the United States that's going to last approximately 14 months. One of the groups has published a calendar, and every place that Lafayette went is recorded on this calendar. So every location that he visited has a chance to celebrate. And although there will be events in Philadelphia this year and Wilmington, our day, as I previously mentioned, is July 26, 2025. That morning will feature activities at the Brandywine Battlefield, and that'll be a group that's doing things down there. In the afternoon, things will shift to Westchester. And we are talking about four events that we might try and pull off from our draft. And we will be keeping in touch with you as we put things together and present the package to you for whatever approvals you need to do and possible some funding as well. The four possible events would be a mini parade, basically six blocks long on High Street from Union Street to Washington Street and then up to over to Marshall Square Park. So we would not block traffic very long, and it would try, we would try and have a flowing block. The only breakdown time, we would spend maybe a half hour at the old courthouse where the Commissioners may do a presentation. And I forgot, at the kickoff of the mini parade, you will, we will probably ask you to do something to Lafayette and his, in his carriage. We hope to have one carriage. And we hope to have youth. We're not going to hire troops and pay them and so on and so on. We're going to try and have youth follow the carriage up High Street. And so kids that are 10 years old, 25 years later on the 250th or the 225th anniversary, you know, hey, I marched in that parade in Westchester. We're also going to maybe consider a faux dinner reenactment in courtroom number one in the courthouse, in the old courthouse. All of that is spelled out in Fjuthie and Cope, no food, just toast and music by people portraying the individuals, such as the Burgess of Westchester Zebu pile. And then the History Center is going to work on a fundraising event for them, to be held at the History Center. That would cap the evening. And then if that finishes around 9:00, 9:30, anybody that wants to, we will parade them back up High Street onto Gay Street, Gay Street to 44th Pavilion, where we'll spend maybe a half hour of hooping and hollering, huzzas to Lafayette as Lafayette hangs out the second floor window over what used to be Fairman's. That's where Lafayette stayed when he was in Westchester, right on the corner on the second floor. And we would be finished by about 10 o'clock. So we're working on these items, but we wanted to alert you, we want you to think about the date, next July and July 26. He left Westchester the morning of the 27th. Marshallton might do a short parade if we pull ours off. They would maybe use the same carriage and horses. And Western Chester County out around East Fallow Field is going to do some things and tie into Lancaster County because that's where he spent his next night. So we just wanted to alert you, this is an international event and a national event to honor Lafayette. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
If there are any questions, otherwise, we'll be keeping you up to date as we progress, okay?
Thank you, I appreciate that. All right, moving on to item number four.
Darrell Cook, South Walnut Street. Last Tuesday night, a neighbor informed me that he popped a rear tire on the curb at High and Minor Street. He requests that the intersection be widened.
Hello, I'm Krupa Daniel from 26 West Union Street. Hello, everyone. I'd just like to emphasize my point I made last night about item five, B on your list. I would recommend the council not approve this latest draft of the short-term rental ordinance and revert to the previous one. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments?
Hi, my name's Tony Seletta, 402 West Gay. I want to speak out again on my belief that we should be allowing short-term housing in the borough. Again, I think the borough's concentrating on fixing a problem we do not have with this particular issue. We continually hear people talk about parking and all these different arguments, most of which don't hold water when it comes to the, what these short-term rentals provide. I think there's, actually, when you talk of parking and traffic, it's going to bring less traffic because nobody's 100% filled, I'm sure. We have parking situations all over town, which I believe are addressed already through permits, through blocks that don't allow, you know, parking for nonresidents at certain times. I heard in the last meeting, the police have never been called to an Airbnb yet. They get kind of lumped in with student housing. This is where families, people with dogs, this is an asset to the community, not a negative thing. I really, really wish you would consider getting a different, some different eyes on it to what it is. This is the way people travel today. This is, you know, we never had Uber. You didn't have GPS in your car. Who remembers using maps? Heck, I remember credit cards where they slid through a thing, and even before that, they looked at your number in a book. This is the world we're in. It's an asset to our community. You're fixing a problem you do not have. Thank you.
Excuse me, Tony, what's your address?
402 West Gay.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, moving on to item four, comments by the Borough Council and Mayor. Ms. Vaccaro.
I am going to remind everyone, downtown Westchester is putting on World Music Day on June 21st, so that's the summer solstice. There will be music all over town from 11:30 in the morning until 9 o'clock at night. So come out, enjoy the music, and have a great summer.
Thank you. This didn't get the attention that it deserved during the Finance Committee meeting, but I just want to give a shout out to the Pension Fund Managers as well as members of the Pension Committee for taking into consideration what the Finance Committee has been discussing and looking to implement over the last couple of weeks. So as a result of what we were, what we wanted to accomplish, which means moving forward that we're going to be investing in funds that have lower expenses. And that is going to lead to an estimated total, correct me if I'm wrong, Sean, of about $32,000 a year. So that's $32,000 a year that we're going to save for taxpayers, retirees, as well as the current employees. So that is the good news. Even better news, there's still more room to go as far as looking at lower expenses. It's good to increase return over time, and again, the tax savings. So again, thank you to the Pension Fund Managers, members of the Finance Committee, as well as the Pension Planning Committee for taking these into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Travis.
Yeah, I just actually wanted to thank all of our first responders in advance for this week because we have heat wave coming, excessive heat. We know that with these types of heat waves, there are incidences, and I hope and pray that we don't have them, but very likely we'll, we'll have some calls related to the excessive heat with not much relief seen over the next week or so. So thanks in advance to all of Westchester's first responders.
Thank you. Ms. Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. One, I wanted to wish a belated Happy Father's Day to all the fathers. Also, wanted to recognize Juneteenth tomorrow and wish everyone a happy Juneteenth in recognition of the emancipated peoples, slave folks. If you didn't have an opportunity to attend the Melton Center event, you will have an opportunity to attend an event at the Chester County Historical Center, Slavery to Servitude on 6/27 at 12:00 PM, and World Music Day, as Ms. Vaccaro mentioned. Thank you.
Mr. Flynn.
Greetings from the Sixth Ward, the sweetest ward in the borough. I want to bring to your attention, after 28 years of vacant building called De La Sandro's, which has sat on West Gay Street for all those years vacant, and everyone wanted to know what was going on with the building, the family finally sold the building. And we're going to have a unique experience in that building. It's called Dim Sum. There, it's normally in Chinatown around Second and Race, and they're going to open up a dim sum restaurant in that space. It's going to be really exciting. So once again, the Sixth Ward gets to enjoy all the, all the reaps of the fun things. Thank you.
I think you were referencing the Lorento's Building?
Yes. The Renzo.
Lorento's.
Is that how you say it? I thought it was a date. Oh, I made it, I guess Italian. Oh, they are Italian.
Thank you. Ms. Shimoney.
Got my eighth grade dance dress at Lorento's. Okay, so what does a, what do a Jewish deli, Trader Joe's, a French bistro, a refill station, and an Indian restaurant all have in common? There was an unofficial Facebook poll on Westchester community with over 435 responses of what Westchester needs. And these were the, I eyeballed it, and these were the top answers. So I don't know how we can get these businesses into Westchester, but they all sound great to me. And, well, Trader Joe's, I think that's a stretch, but we do have the grow, the co-op trying to get a little bit of a grocery store in here. But that's just something that, you know, hopefully we can get some of these great businesses to, to come to us because we've got people looking for you.
Thank you. Mayor DeBaptiste.
So to piggyback on what Councilwoman Lisa Dorsey said, tomorrow is Juneteenth, and many of you do have off, and I would encourage, and the borough has, is closed for tomorrow, I would encourage everyone to be at the Chester County Courthouse tomorrow at 12 noon, and you can learn and see some living history where there will be a reenactment of Juneteenth. It won't be long, it will be about 15 minutes, tops. But there will be a reenactment at 12 noon tomorrow at the Chester County Historical Courthouse, followed by a walk to Bethel AME Church to have a reenactment of what a town hall would have looked like for the slaves at that point, but hearing about Juneteenth. And then, the best part of all, you can enjoy a Juneteenth meal at 4 o'clock, a free meal. All you have to do is register, and I can show you how if you're not sure. Register at 4 o'clock for a Juneteenth meal, which is some good old barbecue and smoked meats along with a couple other. So three things you can celebrate in a more meaningful way tomorrow, some American history called Juneteenth.
Thank you. And since we're running out of dates, I'll put a plug in for the Lafayette's thing in next, next year. But Thursday is the Marshall Square Park, the first concert of the summer, so that's something to look forward to. Other than that, keep cool and watch out for your neighbors. Thanks, everyone. Next item, number five, present to Borough Council, Mayor's selection of new patrol officer for Westchester Police Department. Mayor. I'm sorry, you are up to present your selection of the new patrol officer for the Police Department.
So yes, I've had the privilege of hiring another police officer with your permission and votes. We had several candidates. I selected one out of the several. His name is Ronald Cross. He is from Westchester. He graduated from the Westchester East High School and Westchester University and from the Delaware County Community College Police Academy. He is currently a certified police officer because he has, is working, has worked part-time for WIGO, which is the West Town East Goshen Police Force. But he has experience, but he will still come into the borough at the entry level, pay tier, since it is part-time experience that he has. So Mr. Cross has passed every level of the civil service process, including an interview, a rigorous interview with both myself and Chief Josh Lee. And so we would love for you to approve this, and his anticipated start time would be the beginning of July, about July 1st. And we ask that you put this on the consent agenda for the evening. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to add the mayor's request to promote or to hire Ronald Cross as a new police officer to the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Move that to consent.
We'll take a vote on that. You want me to call a caution, please? Okay, Ms. Dorsey? Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vaccaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis? Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Ms. Shimoney?
Yes.
And Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Got it.
Okay, item B, motion to direct the solicitor to draft an amendment to Chapter 112 zoning, short-term rental ordinance, and schedule a public hearing for August 21, 2024.
Jumping around, knocking my staff around here, we are getting Michael Gill on, on a call. He's stuck in traffic, so he will be able to help. We have a draft before council of a short-term rental ordinance, and I believe there are two matters that need to be, I believe, resolved pursuant to our conversations last night, if I understood correctly what I was hearing. And what I'm referring to are two sections of 112915 Standards and Criteria B, B2 and B4. B2 is the standard for short-term rental separation distance, and B4 is the standard for a short-term, it reads, a short, hey, hey, Michael. A short-term rental should not be permitted in a multifamily dwelling of more than four dwelling units. I believe those are the two matters council wanted to iron out tonight in this conversation before moving forward. Is that correct?
That's correct. I'll start off with the latter item relative to the multifamily dwelling. I mean, the purpose in, in that was to prevent it in some of the larger units that could potentially have more than, than one because of the distance issue. But now the, the former, I think we've talked about having one per, per block in, in the town center being instead of a separation distance. Any comments, questions? Mr. Gill, I don't know if you want to add anything to, to this?
No, that, that's a perfectly legitimate regulation to put into the ordinance. I, I think what I would like to see, and I'll discuss this more thoroughly with Kristen because she may have already thought about it, is, well, just want to be sure that the, the record, when we're adopting the ordinance, when you're adopting the ordinance, has information in it that says, this is what our concern is, this is why we are regulating these, this use spatially. So we're only going to allow this use to have a density in the borough of one every block. Why are we doing that? What is the, what is the planning rationale behind that? What is the concern that we're attempting to address? It seems to me it's, it's, on its face, one of those concerns is obviously you don't want to have an oversaturation of, of the short-term rentals. And that's fine. We just want to make sure that we're addressing that so that if the question ever arises, why did you establish this regulation, that there's a legitimate planning rationale for it?
Michael, are you suggesting that we add some language to the intent section of this section of the ordinance to clarify that?
It could be, it could be written into the intent section, that would be optimal, or, you know, suboptimal, it could be in the, in just the actual record when the ordinance is adopted. But yes, writing it into the intent section would be optimal.
Okay, so if we have a motion, would be to draft that, that amendment based on what we've just discussed, update the, the current draft that's under, under consideration. Any other further comments, questions?
So, so what are we changing? Like, what's the proposal for B2 to change to, right? We've got three options right now, 500 feet, 1,000, along with the why. You know, we, we still have to decide what we want B2 to be, right?
I guess what I'm, I'm recommending, what I heard several people say was one per, per block. And a block is defined, as I understand it, in zoning code as defined by the street and alley. So there are 33 within the town, town center zoning district. Is that fair statement?
So just for clarification, a block is from major street to major street, inclusive of the alley?
No, actually, as defined now by the zoning district, and this is what we should be talking about, whether we want it to be more restrictive. But right now, a block would be from an alley to a major street if there is one between two major streets. Is that?
Does that 33, does that, does that 33 count? That's based off of the existing definition of block, right?
No, but, but that number, that number is a good number. A 33 is a good number.
Okay.
Mr. McCoy?
The, the thought that I have is what, what is, what's considered a block? And let's use my street, West, West Minor Street. You have the 300 block, and you have houses on the, the north side and the south side of the block. And on the north side, there's about 25 houses, and on the south, south side, there's about 25 houses. One side's even, one side's odd. And towards the middle of the block, there is an alley that just crosses over and splits the housing so that you can get over to Market Street. So my, my thought was that it would be done numerically with, say, the 200 block of North Price Street or West Price Street. You know, so there's 20 houses there, you know, that would, that would constitute a block, you know, 300. Because when we designate streets, it's always, you know, the 100 block, the 200 block, the 300 block. So that's the way I was looking at the delineation of a block.
Yeah, just as another example, I'm, I'm just drawing out where I live. There, my block would be six blocks if we include alleys, because I've got two alleys going this way and two alleys going that way. I live on an alley, so you would basically say that where I live is a block, but it's eight units.
Anything that's defined by a street or an alley, block in the current definition.
I would be opposed to that definition. It sounds like almost an overproliferation of potential short-term rentals, which is the opposite, I think, of what we've been talking about, and providing some controls and limits around what we're, you know, allowing. I mean, I'm still a proponent of, you know, allowing them throughout the borough, compromising to town center to see how it goes, and then we'll, you know, open it back up to widening it. But I agree with you, Nicole, I, you know, I'm on a corner of New and Lafayette, and Lafayette Street, there would potentially be three blocks. If you're talking about the other side of the street, it would be five blocks. So there would be five, which is exactly the, the discussion we've been having around control and management of how many we're allowing. So, you know, I don't know if we need to, like, limit the number. Yesterday, we started with the 500 feet, and we said that was 40. If we went to 1,000, just splitting that in half, maybe it's 20 a block. But that, that just, we either need to redefine what a block is in our code or revisit how we're defining short-term rentals.
It sounds like we need to define the geographic, other than blocks, since it's already defined elsewhere.
I just want to chime in, and I, and I agree with the gentleman here, because if we can't even define what a block is, you know, I, I just think we're wasting everyone's time. This is, to me, is a solution in search of a problem, because it doesn't make any sense, what we're doing. If we can't regulate and come up with a way to regulate town center, I, I mean, and define what a block is at all, I have, I think we're probably going to have to go back to square one, look at this entire thing again. Either that, or do a separation distance, or come up with an arbitrary number and state that no more than 30 in town center, no more than 35. But I, I'm more confused now than I was at the beginning.
If 33 is an accurate number, I, I don't understand what we're up in arms about. I, I'm just, we were talking about 40, and we were talking about trying to measure, take measure out the distance between these two. I, I think to get this going, we should go I think to get this going, we should go with the block definition that we have and just attempt this in town center only. I think that's fair.
Can I, can I ask a question? So I think last night we were having a conversation about the separation distance of 500 and we said it's roughly a block. But then we find that blocks are, they're not all, there's no common size or shape to a block. So why, why aren't we not just going right back to the 500 separation distance that seemed clean? We have separation distances for other purposes and other ordinances in the borough with student houses and churches and other childcare centers and stuff like that. So why don't we just, it seemed clean to me. It's measurable. It seems reasonable. And then we don't have to go through this naval gazing exercise of trying to figure out what a block is and redefining it.
That's fair too. I'll go with whichever one the majority wants here. I will give up the block. I'm not saying, I'm just saying, please, can we just move forward with something, please?
Again, I think. I think that we're working this out and and I'm glad we're doing it this way because I don't want, I don't want there to be an unintended result. And what I'm hearing is 30 to 35 short-term rental units as a maximum possibility in the town center is something that a majority of council people could live with. So now the idea is how can we lawfully back into that number? And I might be part of this confusion because I was a little hesitant to use the separation distance metric because you get into the question of, well, is that property 503 feet away or 497 feet away? And it, and that, and when you're making a decision about someone's livelihood, that that's important. They're going to challenge you on that and you got to get it right. So I thought leaving last night that a block was a better way to do it. And then in calculating it and looking at the definition here, I I'm back with Mr. Travis's opinion that we can take the outline of the parcel, we can create a 500-foot buffer around that shape and we can see if it intersects the parcel that's applying for the new one or any other parcel where a short-term rental unit is operating. It'll be, as the applications come in, we can evaluate that. I'm pretty confident we can do that in a very black and white, yes or no way. So I am in agreement that administering a 500-foot separation would be easy, something we could do for council and clear up what a block is and and all that.
I would add to that, Sean, that that's perfectly okay. That's a fine way to do it. You've got the registration requirements. So if somebody is registered and somebody else comes along that's within 500 feet, then unfortunately, then you've got somebody else that's already registered. I would simply put into the ordinance 500 feet as measured from the outer perimeter of the property and some objective standard according to records maintained by the Chester County Board of Assessment, according to the borough's GIS maps, whatever it is, there should be some objective standard there, which addresses your concern about, well, where are we measuring from?
So where it stands right now, we have some agreement. Number two would continue as at 500 with some additional language relative to where where it's measured from and what the basis for the map is. And then striking item four.
I I am very okay with that.
Seemed redundant, also seemed overly punitive. We talked a little bit about it last night. I still don't think it, if we have a separation distance in place, you know, whether it's vertical, horizontal, diagonal, I think, I think we, I think we'd be covered there. It doesn't seem, we have a lot of large buildings in West Chester that our apartment buildings potentially could have an Airbnb in it or converted at some point in time to modernize. And I don't think we want to restrict that in town center.
Mr. McCoy, if I'm listening to everyone, it basically is going to be 500, only one short-term rental can be in a building and it has to be at least 500 feet from the next short-term rental. Only one, okay.
And that equates to approximately 35, 40 in town center.
Maximum.
That seems excessive to me, but.
It seems like a lot, I would prefer 1,000 feet.
Well, I mean, if we're going to do it that way, then you might as well make it throughout the borough. Because if you're going to put everything in one concentrated area, I mean, that is going to impact the renters the most. If we think about it, because it's either short-term rental or they have to rent. And that takes away, you know, I mean, that just makes rent go up if you have it in a concentrated area. If you have it throughout the borough, but with no more than 40, then that delineates the rent in that particular area.
Well, Mr. McGinnis, the fact of the matter is, there's a lot of criteria that goes along with it. If you're not in a permit district, you have to be able to provide off-street parking. So that'll eliminate a lot of, or a parking spot in another lot, which is close to the building. So that that could eliminate a lot of potential people doing it that way. The where it's not permitted, you could, they can use our public lots, you know, right in the borough. So it's either 500 or 1,000 feet. You know, if you go to Ms. Dorsey's point, 500 is 40. If we go 1,000 feet, it's 20 maximum to get this thing started. That way there, we could actually try to manage what we're starting with. And the parking requirements are are dead in the criteria.
Well, to be devil's advocate and piggyback on what Brian has said, you have some BMBs, AirBMBs in the borough that's been acknowledged. Why don't you start making them legal and managing them? And start with that and see how that goes. And then cap it throughout the borough to a number that you can live with, including all the other restrictions you've put in place, like 25 or 30 or whatever is for the for the borough. Because the one thing I do know is this is how people travel. They like to travel with their families and they like to be in a home and not in different hotel suites. Because we know hotels can be scary, especially when you have young children sometimes. So why don't we make the ones we have in the borough legal and manage them? And then add whatever number, I don't know if that's 10 or 12 or 15. We'll find out. You know, we've heard different numbers. And then add 10 or 12 more to it and have 30. And then throughout the borough with all the other restrictions in place, no more than blah, blah, blah. And start from there. And so then that way, people have a selection of the borough, a different, you know. It makes it much more competitive. So it's just a thought. But the one thing I do know, it's actually a risk for Airbnb. The things I've been reading online, I just read on Facebook, one of the Westchester or Chester County groups, the woman went to an Airbnb and it was awful. And they anticipated going there for their vacation. They were out of all their money. They couldn't get it back from the landlord or whatever you call them when you're renting short-term, but they couldn't get their money back and their money was gone. The other thing I read was when their home got trashed and, oh, no, not trashed. The home, the people moved in and the landlord couldn't get them out because of the laws of Pennsylvania and renting, and they couldn't get them out. And they ended up there for months and months and months. So, you know, it's pluses and minuses both ways, but I think, you know, kind of make it simpler than all of this. Just a, just a thought, just a thought.
From a legal perspective, I would have concerns about a simply zooming in on the lots where the existing AirBMBs or VRBOs are located and saying, you are now legal. Because that is lot-by-lot zoning, sort of exclusive of considerations of the zone, the zoning district in which those uses are happening. So zoning needs to be done on a district-by-district basis, not on a lot-by-lot basis. I'd also have similar concerns for the same reasons about saying, within the entire borough, we're going to have X number of this of this land use. Because again, that strikes me as not being zoning on a zone, on a district-by-district basis, but rather on a, it's almost like a borough-wide basis at that point in time. And how are, what are the planning rationales behind saying, you know, that it could theoretically end up with 30 of them in the NC one zoning district theoretically? So I just want to sort of refocus council member and mayor's attention on the fact that zoning needs to be done on a district-by-district basis. And there does need to be a legitimate planning rationale as to why you're going to allow a use in one district and not another.
Well, I can understand why you're saying that, you know, if they're illegal, you just don't say that they're now legal. They would have to go through all the bells and whistles that anyone applying for Airbnb would have to, period. But I don't follow what your legal argument is to say that, no, it couldn't be done throughout the borough in a manner that provides safeguards for the borough.
To be, to be sure, you can allow for a land use throughout the entire borough. You could say that X land use is allowed in all of the NC districts, in the TC. It's allowed in every zoning district, this land use is allowed. But then tapping that number, and please forgive me, it's sort of just a reaction to the to the concept. I'm not familiar with a zoning construct, a zoning construct that says this land use is allowed everywhere, but only up to a certain number of lots are going to be allowed to have it.
What?
I would have some concerns about the legality of that.
How are the student rentals capped?
So student homes, and I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but student homes are a defined use, obviously. And those are allowed in certain zoning districts. I don't believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that student homes are allowed in every zoning district in the borough. So again, that is zoning that's being done on a district-by-district basis.
But can't we do that then if it's allowed for student rentals to do a district-by-district basis? I mean, essentially, I mean, essentially, that's what we're doing if we're putting it just in town center.
Yes, and I think that's fine to say this use is allowed in this zoning district because we find as a legislative body that this use presents these these characteristics. And these characteristics are consistent with the intent of council for this zoning district. It matches up with the comprehensive plan and we're all good to go. That is district-by-district zoning.
And Michael, when I talked to Kristen about it, she didn't have an issue with an arbitrary number, you know, per se, if we said, hey, no more than 40 or the amount of homes that we have, let's say 7,000 in the borough, no more than a half a percent. And we could adjust that every year to equal what Airbnb would be. I mean, I'm just throwing that out there as some type of formula that can work within the borough. Because if it's a half a percent of 7,000, I mean, that's, that almost gets you your number of 35, right?
Yeah, again, as I said before, when I called in, as long as there is a legitimate, as long as there's a legitimate planning rationale behind the legislative determination about what's allowed or not allowed, that's defensible. What I was getting at was sort of more of the, we're going to go, going to allow this use everywhere, regardless of zoning district, but we're going to cap it at a certain number. It's that, it's that movement away from district-by-district zoning that is striking me as problematic. I should, clear, I haven't done this research yet, but it's not a zoning construct that I'm familiar with.
I also want to remind, one of the things that we talked about before we're starting with town center was the fact that, you know, we get a lot of comments that we can't regulate student housing adequately at this point. So we would allow, I don't know, 20 in town center and then use similar separation distance. I don't know, what will we end up? 40, 50, 60, 100, I have no idea. And can our staff handle that starting in September?
And I think the the counter to that continues to be, this is not student housing, right? It's not the same caliber.
But it still requires somebody to inspect.
I'd like to finish, if you just let me finish. It's not the same caliber. It's not the, it's not the same types of people renting. I mean, we heard comments tonight from the audience as well as up here on council. It's families, I mean, I rent them. We're going to Europe in the fall. I'm renting AirBMBs. I was in New York last month, rented AirBMBs. Did that in Chattanooga. It's, people rarely rent, I'm in a hotel if I'm traveling on business. It's not apples to apples if you're comparing a short-term rental to a student rental. It's two very different types of clientele and and product. It's a, it's a very different product.
I'm not comparing the two. I'm saying that there's, there's a number of student housing units. They have to be regulated. We have so many staff to be able to do that. My point is only that now we're going to add another 100 or 150 or whatever units for that same staff to be able to to manage.
And the only, I, and I just wanted to add, I understand your argument, President McCoy. My, but I would add this, and I'm going to be blunt. The housing director we had then is not the housing director we have now in charge of housing. We had a committee out of the community campus committee to talk about enforcement and points and all of that. And the previous director was very uninterested in enforcing it. Blamed it on the software, blamed it on a lot of things, very uninterested in enforcing anything. It would get there and it would die. The housing director now, I believe, is very interested in making sure things are being enforced and places are being inspected. And that's her goal. You know, I had a personal conversation with her about the point system and so, and whether it needed to be revamped. But first, it needs to be tried out and it really has not been tried out, quite frankly. So I think, you know, in addition to, you know, apples, oranges kind of scenario, I think, I think the times are a little different. That's all I need to say.
This, my opinion here at this point is, we've been talking about this for a year and a half. We've agreed on the town center and getting it started and figuring it out and making sure we can monitor these things. Let's not spin ourselves out of control so we're talking about this for another year and a half. This is like, like, this is painful to listen to us here right now. Like, let's just, let's make some decisions, move it forward, get it started. Like, let's just, let's make some decisions, move it forward, get it started so we can see how it works. And then once we see how it works, we can decide, you know, if people want to expand it, which I know there's, there's people here that already do want to expand it, but if, as long as we get things working and they're solid, like, hey, look, it's working, we're good, it'll be faster to expand it. But if we keep sitting here spinning our wheels, we're never going to get anything done, we're never going to be able to regulate and see if we can regulate it and we're just, we're not going to have anything. We're just going to have people being illegally running these things or we're going to have to start enforcing. And you don't want that to happen because we haven't been enforcing because we've been spinning our wheels, but people are starting to come to us saying, well, these are all illegal, you need to start enforcing them. And we do have a new zoning director in person in there. So you might not get the same handshake deal that you got at some point in time, right? Like, so why don't we just make a decision and kind of move forward and start, start doing what we need to do to, to see how this works in our borough? Yeah. So we're not going to use the block. I think we all decided no block. Um, we're at five hundred or a thousand. So, um, I'm okay with whatever the majority wants, really. I, I mean, five hundred or a thousand, I'll go with either because I just want to get us started.
I would like to see five hundred. I don't think anybody's surprised. And get started in town center. Get rid of the, the four-unit definition, just remove that. I would support a thousand. So that's where we are. We, we just need to make the decision between five and a thousand.
Or you're seven fifty?
No. Uh, uh, you know, I, I just want to get started. Uh, I agree with Ms. Dorsey, a, a thousand because it'd be like twenty-five, uh, different, twenty-five new ones in the town center. And, uh, I think an additional twenty-five inspections wouldn't hurt the, uh, uh, building and housing, so, and get rid of the four apartment minimum or maximum, whatever it was. So that's where, that's where I stand. So five hundred, a thousand, I lean towards a thousand to get started.
Sounds like we can go for a thousand. Any other public or, uh, borough council comments? Public comments, additional things that haven't already been said? Come forward, please.
Is, is it clarification? Are you saying it's a thousand in town center only, thousand feet in town center only or borough wide?
Town center only.
Town center only.
This is to get started, make sure we know what we're doing and then we'll let some time go and then we can revisit and see if we're, how strong we are at managing these and what it, what it's doing and how it's working. Because we also now need to listen. Once we approve this, then everybody's got to come and present to us and we have to approve conditional use for each of the, the units, right?
You, you know, and I, I'm hearing the, I'm trying to be sensitive to the council's concerns about this being out of control and affecting the way we have rentals and housing, but isn't this just more or less a licensing of rentals? And can't you just define that based on the population or number of rentals or housing as a percentage? You know, because I look at a thousand feet in town center, well, you, you're going to draw a map and you're going to put circles, but the guy who really wants to do it, he's in somebody's circle and then nobody wants to do it over here. So I get all that. But I think that as a function of licensing, isn't this something our rental people can do? And just create a number based on population, number you want in the borough somehow? Simplify it. Get the revenue. Do the thing. I think it'll be great.
Mr. President. It's clear that the only revenue that, that we've received as, as the borough is the inspection fees.
Occupancy, don't you get occupancy? No? Okay.
Yeah. Mr. President, can you, uh, clarify the way the ordinance is going to be read?
Okay. So as I understand it, where we stand, this will be for town center only and I'm referring to, uh, section five, B, uh, two, we're saying a short-term rental shall be located within, shall not be located within one thousand feet of another lot with a short-term rental and there will be additional language crafted relative to, um, how that perimeter is, is measured and what the basis for the map is. And three remains and item four will be struck. Everything else remains the same.
Mr. President, thank you very much. Can you call the question, please?
We need a motion.
Make a motion, call the question.
You have to make a motion to accept.
I make a motion to accept the way it was presented. Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. I appreciate your authority.
Rules of order, that's the way it goes.
Very much, Mr. McGinnis, like I said.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Mr. Metric, call the question.
Ms. Dorsey.
I'm sorry. One point of clarification, it's a thousand feet, Mr. McCoy? Uh, yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vicaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Ms. Shimoney?
Yes.
And Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, there is one, uh, slight addition, um, and that is item B, motion to appoint conflict counsel and direct them to attend and take a position at the June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four conditional use hearing in West Coast and Township regarding the temporary expansion of student homes. The clarification is we did not previously discuss, uh, who would we, we would be appointing as, uh, conflict counsel. So, um, we have used Bellwark Kelly or the last previous one. So, um, I would add that to, to the consent motion and I assume that's appropriate to, to do.
Also, is it still June twenty-sixth? For some reason I was.
No, it's not. They're changing it to July, but we don't have an exact date yet.
Okay. Do we need to update this as well to take a position at the summer twenty twenty-four?
July twenty twenty-four.
Something.
I can change that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we accept, um, Jonathan Long and Bellwark Kelly, uh, as our alternate, uh, solicitor.
I'll second that.
Okay. Wait for Mr. Metric to call the, the question. I don't know if we need to do that twice, this and then the consent. I'm not sure what's appropriate, but let's. So we will take item B as a separate, uh, motion. We've had a motion that seconded. Mr. Metric, will you call the question?
Ms. Dorsey? Mr. Flynn? Ms. Vicaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Ms. Shimoney?
Yes.
And Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Okay. Then, uh, the remaining part of the consent agenda, uh, item A and C through. Sorry for my staple. Okay. B through, or, uh, C through S.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Mr. Metric, call the question.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn? Ms. Vicaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Travis?
Yes.
Ms. Shimoney?
Yes.
And Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, item number seven, any other business? Seeing none, uh, we'll adjourn the meeting at, uh, seven twenty-nine. Thank you.